Good evening and welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of 6 June 2022. Mr. Hoagland, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Would you all please join me in the pledge? All right, well, it's great to see everybody here tonight that have come to see the contract modification for the water line.[63.01][63.01](laughter) Oh, wait, okay, I think some of you might be here for something else. Stormwater, then. All right, so a couple announcements. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Franciac, who will be, is our new Assistant City Clerk, so we will be seeing more of him in city council chambers. A quick COVID report, so everybody probably knows that some of the cases have spiked up, but it's hit its spike and the numbers have gone back down. Hospitalizations typically lag that, and if you see some of the numbers, it sounds kind of scary, 61% increase or 100% increase. Well, 100% increase, yes, has happened at Island Hospital, but that's from one case to two cases. So, again, there's, you know, still, still out there, but we're, we've pretty much hit the plateau. Waterfront Festival, great success. I know we had one day that wasn't a washout, so well attended, and Art Walk was well attended here in council on Friday. All right, jumping right into council announcements and committee reports, we'll start with the Fiber Committee. Mr. McDougal.
Mayor Miller. I'm looking for my notes right now, sorry.
Sorry, I could have slowed down a little bit.[143.41][143.41](laughter)
Too many tabs open. Okay, Fiber Committee met last week. We have updated numbers. Things are, continue to look good as far as activating new customers. We're at just over 1,300 customers on the network and monthly revenue of just over, actually, 85,400. We've had, we've been getting, continue to get signups, I think, like several over the last week. We've got market share in our kind of original pilot areas of nearly 46%. We've got 41.5% in the EDA area and the West End, just under 40%, and Guismas View at 24.5%. Citywide, we're at 38.6%, so the numbers are looking solid. The West End expansion is continuing. RBC is expected to work through June, and we have another item on our agenda today for the Guismas View construction contract, so that is excellent news. Things with the EDA grant just are continuing on, as expected, it's still going to take some time. And we, we've got basically a couple updates to the, the master services agreement for, for commercial customers, so that's something where there's basically, there's an attachment in the Fiber Committee's email. If anyone would like to review that, MSA, just let us know, we'll pass it on. And that's what I got.
All right, moving on to Finance Committee. We know if the Finance Committee met, and anybody willing to make a report? All right. We'll get back to Housing Affordability Community Services Committee. I know there was a meeting last week.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I'm hoping that Mr. Walters is going to step in and refresh some of my memory to here. Oh, okay, it's all coming back to me. I had my notes in a different place, sorry. So, we had a presentation from two representatives from Island Hospital on the availability of their, their mental health social work program, and there are three social workers in the schools, and they have been doing a tremendous amount of outreach with our youth, and there's obviously a great need from that, particularly since COVID began. So, they are also, they also have providers at Island Hospital, and when we asked how people can access those providers, it turns out they have to do it through their primary care physician. You can't just call Island Hospital and say, "I need a mental health professional to help me," because you can't access it that way. So, as in every area, the, there is a lack of, of staff, there's a labor shortage, and it's really hard to get in, but they're working really hard with grants and other funding sources to bolster that program and make sure it is more available to more people in our community, so continuing to work, work hard on that. And coming up, I just wanted to mention that in Mount Vernon, there's a presentation that some council members and policymakers are going to go to and mayors around the county about a new recovery-based system of mental health care and recovery, so that's going to be like a four-hour workshop a week from Friday that, that several of us are going to go to, so that should, that should bode well for the future as well. And that's it.
Thank you for that.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Ms. Moulton reported on our May 26 meeting. We also met on June 2nd, so we met twice, I think, since our last council meeting. We met with Chief Floyd and talked to him about some of the activity that we have conducted on T Avenue, removing some of the RVs. Several of them, we've been able to get to move on their own, but we've also targeted a few that have had disorderly conduct, littering, public urination, drug dealing, et cetera, related suspected offenses, and were able to get a couple of those who we offered services to, who rejected services, towed, and so now we've reduced the number of RVs left on T Avenue. And we're going to try to continue enforcing the 72-hour parking restriction, but also monitoring that to see what the ultimate result of that is, because we don't want to just move the problem around. We also heard that Compass Health has a plan to hire an additional social worker for Fidawo Island as a designated crisis responder. As you might recall, we identified that as one of our, our missing links in our mental health care model, and so if that happens, that should be a significant improvement in the police department's ability to get people committed to mental health treatment who require it, because they're a danger to self for others. We talked a little bit about the Public Health Department's scheduled presentation, June 21st, to city council. As you might recall, they are working on this North Star model of what we can do as a county to assist with homelessness, to assist with mental health. So their presentation to city council, I think, is one we're all definitely not going to want to miss. And then, we have, on an ongoing basis, been working with Skagit Habitat for Humanity, you've heard me talk about this a number of times. We identified another alternative layout for their, a couple of parcels that the city owns on West 5th Street that would allow them to get six units, maybe five units, through a cottage housing layout on those vacant city parcels, and so we're working through that, and as soon as that's done through the planning department, they're going to still come to city council to present their proposal. And then finally, the League of Women Voters has been working on affordable housing issues, and they would like to hold an Affordable Housing Forum in Anacortes, so we're going to be working with them to set that up. That's it.
Thank you for that report and the reminder that North Star Group will be coming before the city council. They, we gave them a tour of our Anacortes Family Center and the Housing Authority last week, so they could have a, a picture of what we've already allocated, our 1/10th to 1% sales tax money, and then the behavioral health piece, of course, is a significant part of that, so looking forward to hearing them address the whole council, because I know they addressed the committee as well. All right, moving on to Museum. I don't think the Museum Committee actually met, and you can correct me.
Mayor Miller.
Oh, oh, Mr. Carter or Mr. McDougal?
I'll go.
Okay, Mr. McDougal.
The committee itself goofed on scheduling and so didn't quite meet, but our esteemed department head Brett Lunsford sent out some nice notes, so I can fire those off here.
Okay.
So, a number of things going on with outreach and social media promotion, including a couple recent presentations at the library and Anacortes Senior College, also like adding social media features to the Photographers of Anacortes exhibit, community interviews to Anacortes Museum YouTube channel. There's a bunch of stuff for, a couple items under the Mitchell Murals, so King TV Evening Magazine featured, or had a little feature on Bill Mitchell's murals, and it's the ongoing research additions to mural bios and database links at the Bill Mitchell Mural Project.[636.38][636.38](audio cuts out) Sorry, audio problem here. And then, a couple upcoming items. There's an Anacortes House History Research Event coming up next month at the Anacortes Historic Preservation Board, and biographical research link to those database entries for photographers working to update with World War II memorial names. That's the main stuff.
All right, and I also have it on good authority, the Preston is also open, but it did not get underway. All right, that wasn't a very good joke.[677.32][677.32](laughter) All right, Public Works, I know they met before the council meeting. Public Works, who wants to report on that one?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. We just met just now before this meeting, and it was Mr. Walters and Mr. Young and I met, and we talked about two items that are on tonight's agenda. One is a water line replacement contract. There's been a work change order that we are being asked to approve, and the good news on that is it's value-added change order, so what that means is the original estimate was $1.1 million for a certain amount of work to be done. The work was done for less money, leaving us a little bit more money in the budget to expand our scope of work, so we're, we're moving forward and doing more, which, which puts us that little increment ahead of where, where we thought we'd be, which is great. We also talked about the fiber contract that Mr. McDougal mentioned for the civil improvements in the area between A Avenue and Anna Copper Mine Road, where Summit X Contractors will put in the civil improvements that will enable fiber to be installed subsequent to that, and Summit X is a local company, and they had a good bid, and so it's always nice to have someone local that, that we can do business with. We talked also about the Cape Seal Project, which the city does every year in conjunction with Skagit County, and that ends up being really good price for us, and the best news that came out of that is that 37th Street will finally be addressed, and that will be chip sealed and then cape sealed, which isn't the be-all, end-all forever, but it's going to make a really big difference to that street and to the residents there and anyone else who drives or rides their bike or even walks on it. So, that will be coming up this year, something to look forward to, and that should last about seven to 10 years, and then we'll probably do it again. But anyway, it's a great interim solution, that's a pretty, a decent term for our investment on that one. It looks like it's going to cost about $175,000 total, which seems actually really reasonable the longer I'm on city council and I see how much stuff costs. The last thing that we talked about was our water meter project that's ongoing, it's the automated, automated meter reading, and we had a little description about how that's going so far from our acting Public Works Director, Brian McDaniel, and so he will be coming to, to council at some point with more details on that, but basically we learned how staff can see different upticks or downticks in usage for individual customers. They get flagged, the staff does, and then can reach out to the customer and say, "Hey, your water looks a little, your usage looks funny," and then you can identify leaks and save water and save money, like, really quickly, so that was pretty cool. And that's it for now, thanks.
Awesome, thank you for that report. Okay, we're moving on to Item F. Some of you may be here for that item, but while I'm talking, I'll have Chief come up here and start getting things organized. But I tried to, best-laid plans, tried to line up this event, and it's oath of office for police promotions. Tried to line this event up with National Law Enforcement Week, but again, best-laid plans sometimes don't work out, but we're, it's great to have everyone here. I have been fortunate throughout my career to administer oaths dozens of times, and it's always an honor for me to do that, especially when someone's taking an oath to take on more responsibility and serve something bigger than themselves, and in this case, making, keeping our community safe. So, without further ado, I am turning it over to Chief Floyd, and, and I'm ready to administer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Miller, and members of the council, many members of the audience, both here in council chambers and watching at home tonight. The Police Department is pleased to be able to share with you the oaths of office for not only a new employee, but employees that we're promoting to new positions with greater responsibility. I'd like to start first with Community Service Officer Brent Lindquist. Brent was hired by the Anacortes Police Department in December of 2021, but his oath of office and swearing in were delayed due to COVID concerns that we had at the time. Brent is a Watkins County native and graduated from Washington State University with a degree in communications and an emphasis in journalism. Brent came to the Anacortes Police Department from the print media industry, and we're excited to have him as part of our team. Brent is joined in attendance tonight by his wife Brianna and his parents Randy and Vicky Lindquist. Congratulations, Brent, and Mr. Mayor, would you administer the oath of office? Next, I have Corporal Michael Skeppers. Corporal Skeppers was born and raised in South Africa, coming to the United States as a student in 2008, and attended the University of Portland. Corporal Skeppers has served in the Army National Guard, which aided in his process to become a U.S. citizen. Corporal Skeppers was hired by the Anacortes Police Department in April of 2014. He has served the city and the police department in various capacities, including patrol officer, emergency vehicle operations instructor, field training officer, and is currently the Police Services Guild Vice President. Corporal Skeppers is joined in attendance tonight by his wife Larissa, children Kiara and Carter, father-in-law Dale, and mother-in-law Torina. Okay, halfway done. Next, we have Sergeant Robert Leetz. Sergeant Leetz was hired in 2007 by the Anacortes Police Department after finishing his degree at Central Washington University. Sergeant Leetz has served the city and the police department in capacities as patrol officer, field training officer, emergency vehicle operations instructor, and detective. Sergeant Leetz was previously promoted to the rank of corporal in 2015 and has served both as patrol and detective corporal. He's also served as the guild president for two terms and is joined in attendance tonight by his wife Carrie, sons Liam and Josh, and his father Richard. Congratulations, Rob. And finally, we have Captain Chad Pruitt. Captain Pruitt is a native of Bellingham and received his degree from Washington State University. For those that are keeping score at home, we're tipping the scales in the correct direction, cougars are still ahead.[1412.32][1412.32](laughter) Got to keep the cougar to husky ratio in our favor. Sergeant Pruitt joined the Anacortes Police Department in August of 1999, and fun fact, he was my final field training officer, so if there's any complaints about what I'm doing here and how I'm doing it, you can direct those to Captain Pruitt. He has served the city of Anacortes Police Department as patrol officer, marine patrol officer, bike patrol officer, field training officer, field training coordinator, patrol sergeant, detective sergeant, in two terms as the Vice President for the Anacortes Police Services Guild. He'll now be running the Investigations Division for the police department in addition to responsibilities for accreditation, professional standards, and training for the entire department. Captain Pruitt is joined in attendance tonight by his wife Beth, daughters Cassidy, Riley, and Sawyer. Congratulations, Chad.[1474.61][1474.61](applause)
All right, thank you, everybody. All right, we're going to move along to Item Number Four on our agenda, and that is public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council on any items that are not on our agenda, and I've got one attendee online, and I know I have at least one member of the audience that would like to address the council, and you're on, Mr. Thurber.
Good evening, Doug Thurber, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I do have three comments, but if you pay attention, I can get through these in three minutes.
All right, that's, that's the number.
The first thing is to avoid a glitch that occurred in procedure, that occurred two weeks ago. I suggest that any changes in the rules for public participation during a public comment period be made prior to the beginning of the meeting, and not what happened two weeks ago where the rules were changed amidst public comment during the meeting, so I suggest that be done. Also, two weeks ago, there was a resolution for acknowledging about 5% of the population in Anacortes, and I believe there should be a resolution for the 95% that were not acknowledged two weeks ago. I have a suggestion for the wordage of that, and I'll read it now. The city council, acting in regard for the citizens of Anacortes, resolved to declare August 2022 as the month to honor the traditional family relationship of one man and one woman. The overwhelming majority of Anacortes citizens respect and have relationships that produce children that grow up and become parents, grandparents, and hopefully, great-grandparents. The traditional family sustains and continues our customs, culture, values, and are our living link between our past and our future, our lineage. The word August dates back 2,000 years, with a meaning of The word 'August' dates back 2,000 years with a meaning of respected, dignified, and inspiring admiration. It is fitting that August be named Traditional Families Month by this body. We do so resolve." That's a suggestion that I'm putting forward to you all. The last thing is, the election of 2020 was not comfortable. There was a lot of concerns about voting machines and ballots that came in in the middle of the night and whatnot to voting places. Some voting observers not allowed in during the counting, et cetera, et cetera. We all heard those complaints. Three weeks ago, there was a DVD released, and it's called 2,000 Mules. I wanted to make that DVD available to anyone who's interested in possible shenanigans that went on during the 2020 election. There is evidence that is able to be adjudicated. In other words, prosecution and whatnot, it's hard evidence. I have that DVD. I've given a few out to City Council members. I have other copies, if you're all interested in what went on during the election of 2020 that is actually hard-proven fact. So, thank you for your comments. I have these DVDs. Anyone in the audience or the City Council, welcome to have one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? This is public comment period to, for members of the public to address the council. Any other members of the public wish to address the council? I've got one attendee online. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young, this is not an opportunity to engage in debate with members of the public.
I'm not engaging in a debate with the public, Mr. Miller, but it is time. Sometimes councils do make statements. We've done that in all of the years that I've been on council, and I don't believe that this time should be considered any different. So my response to that is to say that our world has changed a lot. The protocols that were allowed at last week's, two weeks ago, meeting were proper and just. Because you disagreed with them, Mr. Thurber, is not a reason--
Mr. Young, I'm going to have to stop. This is not an opportunity to engage in debate with members of the public that are addressing the council. That has been the procedure when I was on council for eight years, and it will continue to be the procedure.
And I would also say to you, Mayor, that when I'm addressed directly as operating as Mayor Pro Tem and someone is addressing procedures that were done here in the chamber as being outside of the labyrinth, I needed to address that because I needed to set the record straight. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment? All right, we're moving on to item five, our consent agenda. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Mr. Carter, to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to item six, Other Business. First on the list is Item 6A, Ordinance 4021, Amending Title VI AMC Regarding Animals. This is discussion and possible action. I think we've seen this one before. I know there's been some great comments by council members, and I'll drag it out a little bit longer for Ms. Swetnam to get set up and show pictures of puppies. Nice work.
Thanks, I couldn't help myself. Most of the things we present on don't have cute pictures online of them. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the audience. I thought for sure they were all here for Title VI, not the contract, but-- So, tonight is a second read on the Ordinance 4021 that we brought you back in April, which is a rewrite or a heavy edit of Chapter 608 of the Anacortes Municipal Code, which governs the procedures for dangerous dogs. I wanted to say first, thank you to council for all of the thoughtful comments and feedback on the original draft that was presented, and I think we were able to incorporate some of those into this updated draft. So, more dog pictures. So, just, I'm going to go back through it quickly just to review what we talked about last time. So, as a review, we've not updated the Dangerous Dog chapter since 2015, and Animal Control Officer Zibrina Naibo, working with Chief Floyd, have identified some areas where the chapter needs to be updated to improve enforceability and clarity. So, the changes that were in the original-- This one's my favorite, by the way, with the Afghan shaking. But, the changes that were in the original draft that was presented in April did quite a bit of work on the definition section that clarified that a dog can be potentially dangerous if they bite only once. The original code said bites, as in plural. I also updated the definition of dangerous dogs to include dogs declared dangerous in other jurisdictions, defined a proper enclosure of a dangerous dog to be consistent with what other local agencies have included in their codes, and added a definition of provoked. There is also a new exemption, which I appreciate Officer Naibo explaining in really clear detail at the last meeting, that allowed some exemptions from the requirements for potentially dangerous dogs if they went through that rigorous canine good citizenship program. Mr. Walters here. So, additional changes, they added-- We added notification timeframe for dangerous dogs that move or become deceased. In other words, if a dog leaves the jurisdiction for whatever reason, the owner needs to report back to the animal control officer, so we're no longer tracking that animal. We also allowed for notification of an owner of a dangerous dog to happen by publication if other methods fail, which is consistent with other court procedures for other types of notification. We did update the appeal timeframe from five days to 14 days to coincide with adjacent jurisdictions. The daily booking rate, which reflects the actual cost of taking care of the dog for a day, was changed from $10 to $15. And the ordinance reduced the failure to register or renew a license from a misdemeanor to a civil infraction, consistent with what other Skagit County jurisdictions are doing. So, since April, and I really apologize that the text is so small, but I had to choose between bigger text and this picture of the dog in the pool, so, sorry. So, the changes that were made based on the feedback from council during the last meeting and some conversations that I've had since that meeting. We clarified in Section 608015A, the definition of a potentially dangerous dog. Mr. Walters recommended that we simplify the language to, rather than say "a dog that inflicts one or more bites," change it to "a dog that bites." So, we made that change. There was also a question about Officer Naibo wanted to allow, if an animal has been declared dangerous or potentially dangerous in another jurisdiction, for that to be a factor in escalating that categorization here as well. And so, we added the language into Section 608015A to clarify that that, you know, classification in another jurisdiction works both for a dangerous dog declaration but also for a potentially dangerous dog declaration. So, I think that addressed a concern that Mr. Walters had. Similarly, the adjustment was made in 608015B to make the definition of a dangerous dog clearer when it's been declared in another jurisdiction. Kind of the meteor discussion and most significant change since the last draft that you all saw is to Section 608015J. And that was the definition of provocation. So, we talked about last time, the structure is basically that if an animal is provoked, that can be a defense to the being declared a potentially dangerous or dangerous dog in certain circumstances. And the definition that was in the original code was one that was developed by staff, but it seemed as though council was in favor of having that definition align with the RCW definition. And there's a description of what that provocation exemption looks like in Section 1608090, subsection 3 of the Revised Code of Washington. And so, the definition that we put into the code kind of has one of these four elements have to be there in order for a dog to have been provoked. And those are that the person was committing a willful trespass or other tort upon the premises occupied by the owner. This is the person who gets bit. That they were tormenting, abusing, or assaulting the dog. That they had previously in the past been observed or been reported to have tormented, abused, or assaulted the dog, or if they were committing or attempting to commit a crime. So, we made that adjustment, and then Mr. Walters identified a numbering issue in Section 608170, so we fixed that. So, those are the changes. Gratuitous dog slide. The next steps are really to finalize and adopt the ordinance and the last one. So, and I'm happy to go back to, if there are any questions, this slide that goes through the changes.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Swetnam. And I'd also like to thank Officer Naibo and Chief Floyd for their work on this, to bring this part of our code into consistency with the RCW. I am in favor of the definition in our code matching the RCW definition. I think that it brings more clarity. And I thought I was going to say one more thing, but I don't think I am. So, thanks. I think these are good changes.
And this one is open for public comment, so opportunity is now for members of the public that might want to address the council on these code changes. All right, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
One other change that I had sent to you, Darcy, was an attempt to break up the definition of provoked, so that it simply had some greater clarity, because it's a list of possible parameters separated by or. Did you get that?
I did get that. Thank you, Mr. Walters. And what I can do, and I think that Mr. Walters' change is a good one. The definition in the code, as you have it in your packet, is kind of just a long sentence that's got some commas in it, but Mr. Walters broke it out into subsections that I think make it easier to read and understand. So, if council would like, I'm happy to make that change, integrate it into an updated version of the ordinance, and bring it back on the consent agenda next week.
Okay, I'm seeing a lot of head nods, except because it's an ordinance, I think it's got to be on the regular agenda. But, Mr. Walters, you were going to mention something?
Yeah, I think it's important for clarity. Another thing that I found in looking at Bellingham's ordinance is that they've got a provision for seizure of a dog that does bite, I think so that it can be tested for rabies. Do we have any provision or method of dealing with that?
That's a great question. I'm looking in the back for the experts. You know, I'm happy to ask that question of Officer Naibo and Chief Floyd, what they typically do if there is a dog that bites and whether they go through rabies testing. I feel strongly that that happens, but that's not an official answer, so maybe it's good for me to get some more information for council and bring it back, present that information with an updated ordinance.
And I don't propose that provision to hold up this ordinance, but it did come to mind while reviewing this one. It's very much separate from the dangerous dog and potentially dangerous dog procedures, but it definitely fits in, it seems to me. So, I would ask that we come back fairly quickly with an answer to that, and then we could follow up with another ordinance to add that provision, assuming it's necessary.
Okay, I think that we have the information that we need. Unless there's any more comments from council, we'll bring it back shortly, soon.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to Item 6B. It's a contract award, access Anacortes Fiber Internet Gwemas View Area Underground Construction Project. And as Mr. Lindberg's setting up here, going to tag team with Mr. Holman, I just want to say how pleased I am with the work of the Fiber and Public Works Department collaborating on this particular bid, but I'll let them talk about all the great stuff that they're doing. So, over to you, Mr. Lindberg.
Mayor Miller, council members, members of the public, thank you. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Yu, who had an unavoidable schedule conflict. She wishes she could be here and apologizes for not being here. She asked me to fill in for her, and I agreed to. So, as Mayor Miller has mentioned, the Fiber Group and Engineering Division worked collaboratively to prepare the bid documents that are before you. We decided to separate the underground work, the civil work, from the fiber deployment itself in hopes that we could find a contractor that would be perhaps more local, that perhaps would not have quite the specialized workforce that some of the fiber work requires. And we think we did that. A separate contract will sooner or later come to you for that fiber work, for some aerial work, placing the MST's, pulling fiber cables, and so on. Engineering will be providing the construction project management, and Mr. Holman will be joining me here in just a moment if he's-- Oh, here he is, okay. Mr. Holman will be stepping up in just a moment. This part of the project passes approximately 900 parcels. It will be funded at this point by debt, although we-- Excuse me. As is noted on this first slide, we are hoping to obtain $500,000 in .09 grant funding from the county. We hope to hear some word on that fairly soon. We are hopeful. This project is included in the current CFP, and these are the details there. And with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Mr. Holman.
Thank you, Mr. Lindberg. So, I'm going to share with you a little bit about the actual construction itself. The engineer-- As Mr. Lindberg said, this project installs what we're calling the civil improvements, or the actual conduit and vaults for the fiber. As Mr. Lindberg said, we'll follow up with the installation of the more technical items later, but we felt that getting a standard civil contractor was the best use of city money to use a contractor that was less specialized than maybe a fiber installing contractor would be. And I think that bore out well. The engineer's estimate for this project was right around $200,200,000. We had four bidders total on the project, and the low bidder was Summit X from Anacortes, and their bid was $2,200,000-- That's a little cumbersome-- --and $14. So, we did see good bids on that, and good competitive bids and a good price. This project is anticipated to start in mid-September. We're waiting for some supplies to come in, some of the vaults, some of the conduit that we're going to install on this project. We expect those to show up hopefully mid-September. So, we're looking at an early fall construction date. The contract has 195 working days, and we have an estimated completion of spring, summer, 2023, probably around June. So, staff recommends approval of this contract with Summit X.
All right, thank you, council. Questions for either Mr. Lindberg or Mr. Holman? Mr. McDougal.
Mayor Miller. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to both departments. I think it's a fantastic idea to separate the civil construction from the pulling the fiber and the MST installation. Actually, I had a quick question for Mr. Lindberg. I know we've got significant lead times on fiber from just-- Oh, just the ordering process. They're like 40 weeks out. We're looking at a separate contractor, it sounds like, to do the actual fiber pulls and MST installations. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Well, a separate call for bids. I guess at this point, we couldn't say who the contractor's going to end up being.
Got it, okay. And that's because our-- And that's because our in-house fiber installers, they're basically booked solid just doing actual home and business installations, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Then, schedule-wise, are we, because of those long lead times, I believe you've actually preemptively ordered a number of those kinds of materials, so are we looking at, like, converging schedules pretty well with the pulling the fiber and the MST's, like, kind of right after the street construction goes through?
That is our genuine hope, that we'll be able to work with Summit X and that they'll be flexible in the areas and the paths in which they undertake their work, so that then we can have the next contractor more or less follow on their heels in pulling the fiber in, so that we can then turn our crews on to actually installing customers.
Fantastic, thank you. And thank you for jumping on that, oh, just the long lead time materials as well. That was a really good move.
I should clarify for all of you that in terms of initiating the thought of separating out the civil works from the fiber work, I had no part in that. That was Tim's idea. And, Tim, well, it was really Tim's idea, and, you know, the credit for that excellent decision really needs to be acknowledged for Mr. Holman.
Many thanks.
Again, it was a really collaborative effort, and it was taking lessons learned from previous fiber contracts and, you know, getting smarter about it, including looking at the long lead times. So, great work from the fiber department, forward thinking there, and then just working together with the other experts that we have on staff to figure out the best way forward. So, again, it's a lot of money, and we know it's a major investment that we're making in the community, and there's some risk involved, but we're putting every, our best effort from every corner of the staff to get it done right. So, again, thanks. Any other questions for either of these folks? All right, well, any motion, perhaps?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I move that City Council authorize the mayor to sign Contract 22-119-FBR-001 with Summit X Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $2,214.66 to perform the Access Fiber Guimasview Area Underground Construction Project.
Second.
All right, simultaneous seconds. Motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Hubick, to, for me to sign the contract, Project Mr. Hoagland, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Item 6C. It's a contract modification, 2022 Waterline Replacement, Waterline Replacements. And we got a little preview from the Public Works Committee, but now it's time for the big show. Mr. McDaniel, let's go.
I know that everybody was sticking around waiting for this one, but, you know, hold the applause because we do have stormwater coming up following this. So, thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. This evening, we're really excited to ask the approval for the issue of contract modification to C. Johnson Construction Incorporated in the amount of $242,994.79, increasing the total contract price to $1,14,398.76. This modification is a programmatic water main replacement, and we are using this contract modification to maximize the dollars that have been allocated for this program. So, it's really a big win for the city and the utility to move ahead with this and maximize the amount of the contract that we have today. So, with that, I'll open it up for questions. Either myself or Mr. Holman could answer those.
Okay, council, questions? Mr. Young.
Now, I just wanted to make a comment. You know, in the Public Works meeting, really, we went into some great detail about these projects and the hard work that's been being put forward, not only to be good stewards of the public funds, but also to see opportunity where it exists, and particularly when we can get more bang for the buck, so to speak. And I really just wanted to commend the team for that. That was very evident in our meeting today on this particular project, and I think Mr. Walters and, of course, Ms. Moulton and myself made mention of that then, but I wanted to also make mention of it now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any other comments, questions? Entertaining a motion, then.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young for contract modification, Mr. Hoagland, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, and we save the best for last. We're, Item 6D, Ordinance 4022, Adoption of the 2019 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. Ms. Henneberg, I'm sure you're... Oh, Mr. McDaniel's going to introduce it, of course, and then we'll see the real star here in a minute.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening. This evening, we are bringing forward the second reading of the adoption of the 2019 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington, and up for discussion and possible action. This evening, we have Diane Henneberg here to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, so you didn't time it out, so she had time to come up here, but...
I could start filling this a little bit.
Well, I'll fill it with a little bit. I just want to thank her personally for time spent at the Waterfront Festival, being there to answer questions by many members of the community. So, again, one day was a little bit better than the other, but thanks again. All right. All right, well, I don't know if you have anything you wanted to say, or just, you know, keep it open for questions, but go ahead.
No thrilling PowerPoint this time. Just if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and otherwise, hopefully, we can move forward with adopting the ordinance.
All right. Questions for our stormwater expert? Everybody's memorized it and is good with the document?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
My concerns and suggestions have been addressed. I move approval of the ordinance as presented.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Moulton to adopt Ordinance 4022, Adoption of the 2019 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. Mr. Hoagland, take the vote, please.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much, and, I mean, no further business before the council adjourn the meeting. Thanks, have a good evening.